I got a call from, from a property owner out that way today. And of course, they couldn't be here at this public hearing. And didn't know if there was going to be another one scheduled, maybe in the community out that way somewhere.
Yes, sir, there will be. So the next step for us is, there's four hundred and forty-five property owners, parcels owners. They will all receive a letter that should be coming in the mail probably mid-July. Then there's a questionnaire that follows that, and then there will be an open house that will be hosted at Nana Halem Village.
Yeah, that was in this packet that you gave us earlier. And I just want to be sure that all those things are still on.
Yes.
Ongoing. And the, the person's concern though was, you know, would you acquire more right-of-way than you already have? Or are you going to be able to do this in the same width of right-of-way?
Transmission right-of-ways are longer or wider rather than our distribution, especially single-phase distribution and even our three-phase distribution. But a lot of that will be determined on the route, which is part of the study that's coming up.
Okay.
But yes.
All of that's all still in the planning section. You don't really have a line of sight.
No, sir, not yet.
You're going to get from point A to point B.
That's correct.
Okay. So there's time for all that to be, folks can ask the question.
Yes. Yeah, and when we have the meeting at the Nana Halem Village, there'll be, you know, posters up showing the routes and considerations.
All right. Thank you. That, that was all the person had wanted me to ask.
Excellent. Sure. Well, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Very good. Again, thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn that meeting.
I make a motion to.
Any second. On my favor, please raise your hand. Yes, all stand, please.
That's great. Thank you, heaven's father, for this study. Thank you for many blessings that you give us. Thank you for allowing us to be here to serve our fellow man. Thank you for the focus of this county and this, our home. We pray God that you would ever bless each and every one. And we thank you for just watching down and caring for us each day. Be with us all, dear God. Put us where you want us to be at the right time. We pray towards for those that have lost loved ones as you've chomped their hearts, those folks who are sick and ill. We pray God that your healing power be on. And just lead us and guide us and be with us all every day. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And I called to order the Swain County Board of Commissioners work session, July first, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty P M. Gunnar, you lead us there, please, sir.
Thanks to callers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now, it's up to discussing our, a, the department head reports. First up, we have the rec department.
How is everybody?
How are you?
Pretty good. So, got a couple things. So I'm going to run through our programs and then I'll run through our facilities is how I've got it planned out. So for youth basketball, we had a hundred and nineteen kids participated and we had twenty-eight volunteers. Youth wrestling, we had thirty-one children participate, and it's more run like a camp than a league. We had four volunteers, the program evaluation for it. We're looking to move it into a league and move it from here. It'll be here, Robbinsville and Cherokee, and there'll be four different teams and four different groups. Is hopefully how we're going to run it next year. For T-ball, we had forty-seven children and twelve volunteers. For flag football this year, we had a hundred and twenty-one kids and twenty-four volunteers. For youth football, we have a hundred and ten currently registered and twenty-two volunteers lined up. For cheerleading, we have seventy-nine kids and ten volunteers. For summer camp, we had a total participation of sixty-five kids. That's currently ongoing. We also partnered with four-H this summer to do weekly programs. For swim lessons, we have thirty-five children that are currently registered for the summer for swim lessons. And then for the Swain County Senior Games, we had fourteen total participations. And then we have twelve that can go to state finals and three, out of those twelve, three are registered. We had six volunteers for that as well. So for our pool, we have a hundred and eleven memberships. So the reservations we have for the pool, for those are like pool parties in the evenings. There's sixty-one reservations totaling eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for pool revenue. For just this year, starting from May twenty-third to June thirtieth is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. And a total pool concession of a thousand dollars and twenty-four dollars, or a thousand and twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. For our pavilions, we have four reservations at the Joel Gas Pavilion for a hundred and thirty-five dollars. The Morgan Pavilion had fifty reservations. At sixteen hundred dollars and the Playground Pavilion had thirty-four reservations at a hundred and, or one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. For our soccer, baseball and softball fields, we had, baseball had forty-five reservations total for the year. Softball had forty reservations. Little League had fifty-nine and soccer had three hundred and sixteen reservations. Those include programs like Little League Baseball, our stuff that we run, and then anyone else that kind of wants to do just anything in the community. And then there's just public use. It's a first-come, first-served basis. So for our indoor recreation department, such as like the gym, we had two hundred and eight reservations total. And then for indoor batting cage for this year, we had twenty-eight reservations. Our total transaction report for this year is one thousand seven hundred, one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents for all revenue made from the Swain County Recreation Department and pool. That's a surplus of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents based off last year's budgeted revenue. Total expenditures is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. This includes the grants and capital projects. This is also including other budgeting and programs. It's not just the total operating cost for the rec park. And then currently, we are fully staffed. And so we have twenty-three part-time workers, four full-time workers. We did receive the NCAS U S, U S Sports Grant, Youth Sports Grant. That's twenty thousand dollars for this year with a reoccurring ten thousand dollars. And that pays for programs such as like we need volleyballs for a program, we need nets, basketballs, stuff like that, football helmets, pads. Um, and then one thing I did want to talk to yous about today is for our food trucks. I know yous previously have approved that. I have a policy ready for you guys to look at and approve and an application to start that process to get them at the pool. So, I hand those to you. It just goes over the application, which is the first page. Again, the policies, three pages. I know that the high school has, is going to allow us to do cold food trucks during football games. They're asking to do a ten percent revenue and we get fifteen because it's a twenty-five percent total revenue for daily costs associated with that. So I know that is something that we would need to talk about when that kind of rolls around. But for now, it's just for the pool area. And it's a twenty-five percent fee for daily proceeds to go to us.
When you need this back, Bob?
It's totally up to you guys. As soon as it's approved, I can start the application process for vendors. All the policy states is kind of the different ways they can go about applying, which is that first page. This is everything they need to fill out and turn in their permits. They have to have a permit with the Swain County Health Department before they can even apply to be at our facility. And then it pretty much states they can't be anywhere unless otherwise told. They have to be at the pool. They can't go up there to the football fields. It just states the hours and we could, we would create the schedule and everything for it.
You haven't got nothing there right now, do you? We will approve this, so that happens, okay?
I'm, I'm good with it. You guys are.
And I will say, there have been some features that.
Oh, yeah, they've already been reaching out and wanting to start. Oh, yeah.
At least get the application.
Yes, they want to begin.
So, I think that you have to have some rules in place and I'm glad that, that you got the.
And they're very basic on that sheet. And you know, as we go out, go through it, we're going to have to work out kicks and everything that we do. So we'll get, we'll definitely, I'll make lists and bring them to you if I ever have any larger things.
We'll be working progress for a little while.
Yeah.
I'm off.
Uh, we're just going to vote on that, though.
That sounds good to me.
I need a motion to approve the mobile food vending policy and the mobile food vending application.
David made one.
David made one. Say, in a second. On my favor, please raise your hand. Passing them.
Sweet. And that's everything I have unless you guys have questions.
Anybody got any questions?
Sounds like all your programs are running pretty, pretty squarely. And you know, the ones that can make some profit, they are.
Yeah, and that's what it's kind of designed to do is all of the programs are designed to be self-sufficient. Because I don't want to charge an arm and a leg, because if yous did know what other counties charge for their programs, it's ridiculous. Like, I know that, what is it, Hayesville? They charge like four hundred and twenty-five dollars for a cheerleader. Yes, and we charge with resident fee, it's eighty-five. Non-resident, it's a hundred. So, yeah, it's, it's quite, it's quite different. But they're pretty self-sufficient and we try to keep our costs low with every program.
We appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, next up is DSS.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good. Um, did you guys get a packet of information? Okay. Um, so, are those my numbers? Yes. So since I submitted that, I do want to clarify that we have forty-nine children in custody. We have six participating in the eighteen to twenty-one program. We have three ICPC cases. Um, for a total of fifty-eight youth or young adults that we are caring for at this time. The reason that the numbers are different is because on six twenty-six, we actually had five children to reunify. It was two sibling groups. So a sibling group of two and a sibling group of three were reunified with their parents, which is always a great day. Um, so that brings our total to forty-nine currently. The second topic I wanted to talk about, in your packet, you will have one for this healthy blue. I just wanted to explain this really quickly. It takes effect December first. And what it is going to do is basically have one insurance or Medicaid provider for all foster children. And that's considered to be healthy blue, which is of Blue Cross and Blue Shield. However, since we do have some native children on our caseloads, they have an option of doing what is called tribal option. Or they can do the regular Medicaid for foster children. And what tribal option does is actually brings their community, their hospitals, all the things that they do. That's where your child would be seen. Um, sometimes they have a preference to not be seen there. And if that is their choice, then we can put them on regular Medicaid. But that is going to be a difference. Um, in this model, each child will get a case manager with wraparound services. So we're hoping that that's going to help with everything from our placement prices to the mental health issues that we're seeing in our foster children. The second thing to go out is what is called PATH NC. This is a case management system for child welfare. We're going to start with our intake, with our child Protective Services investigations and assessments, as well as our in-home are going to be in this system. And this is so we can have a consistent basis across North Carolina. Because there's a hundred counties in North Carolina and every single one of them do it a little bit different. So they're hoping that this will be a better screening process for the reports that come in, as well as inputting our data and having it consistent throughout the entire state. Um, so with that being said, there is going to be some growing pains when people call to make reports. Um, because it's a whole new system for us, but we are diligently working through that. There are seven online modules that we have to complete before we do a four-day in-house module. So everyone is getting the proper training and that is also rolling out as of August eleventh. Um, wanted to give an update on our youth or children's wellness home. This is the home that some people refer to as our foster care home. It's been in the making for quite some time. It's a four-bedroom, two-bath home that we will be able to keep kids that do not have placements, that may be in between a placement. Um, sometimes that does happen and they have been housed in our large conference room. Um, and that is not an appropriate environment for anyone. So this is going to be a more home-like surrounding for temporary placement of children that we cannot locate our, locate placements for. The other side of that house is AWAKE, which is the Children's Advocacy Center. And that's where we already participate with AWAKE out of Jackson County. So they're now having a facility here in Swain County. Um, we use it as well as law enforcement uses it for any kind of abuse cases um, or extreme neglect cases for interviews of the family and children. Um, we have several vacancies in our agency. We have a Child Protective Services Supervisor vacancy. We currently hired a permanency planning social worker, but we're getting ready to lose three of our other ones, which is only going to bring us down to three social workers. Um, so there's a vacancy in permanency planning. Income maintenance workers such as Medicaid and food stamps, we do still have positions available there. And we have recently added a part-time scanner position for maybe twenty hours a week. This person is going to come in and scan the records that we have left, as well as being a backup for the front desk. Um, I don't anticipate that this is going to be too big of an impact as it's only twenty hours a week. Are there any questions about anything that I've given out, that I've talked about or have not mentioned? And this is not a full report. Um, I did just present to you guys in March. So, um, the next time I present, I will give you a full report.
Good day. Anybody got anything? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be the cooperative extension.
Good evening, county manager and commissioners and chairman. Thank you all for having us. And, um, so I'm Rob Hawke, county extension director here in Swain and also have Jackson County. So don't hold that against me. All right. Um, I'll give you, y'all got this handout, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate that. So, I'll, I'll first report the, the fair last August. Uh, we had over two thousand attendees and the fair coming up this year will be August twenty-second, twenty-third. And I've got a flyer here that got one down the front to let you know, uh, love to have you again. Come join us. So we've raised the fair committee, which myself and our extension staff, as well as others in the community, soil and water and volunteers. Uh, last year raised thirty-four thousand, over forty-four, over thirty-four thousand dollars. So we had twelve food vendors, thirty craft vendors, uh, sixteen educational booths. But the big part of the fair, of course, is the livestock shows. Um, the youth, not just here in Swain County, but adjacent counties and even three and four hours from here on the circuit have come to participate in that. We had almost a hundred horticulture entries, which is growing, and then we had fifty-four four-H entries. So our, uh, county advisory leadership is, is made up of a, a good group of, of community leaders. And we have nine active members that help us out in the community, uh, give us some feedback of what's happening in the community and keep, help us keep the pulse on where we can assist with different educational programs. So, anyway, the SHIP program is out of our office. I'm not sure if you knew that, out at the SEC building. But they served, uh, this past, uh, year and their open enrollment ended around December seventh. They had two hundred and twenty-five clients, um, which was over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of medication plans for savings of almost a thousand dollars per client. So they do a really good job, Allison Woodard and Patsy. So if you see them, um, please tell them that they're doing a great job. Because we take, Melissa Vaughn and even the staff, we take a lot of the scheduling out there. From every Monday of the year all the way from October to early December, we do open enrollments. So, and this is not in the report, just for twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, from last year exactly, uh, to today, was over two thousand, two thousand three hundred and one contacts. Most of those were direct contacts in person, but also some were indirect, such as phone calls, emails. So serving a lot of people here in the county. Uh, all across our programs, horticulture, livestock, four-H, family consumer science, natural resources, community development. So administratively, uh, we were down two agents as of last fall, but now we're fully staffed. We've got a new family consumer science agent, Shannon Royce. She's going to speak in a minute about her programs. Also Amber Johnston, our new four-H agent. And they're at four-H camp, uh, as we speak. So we work with soil and water. Do have a lot of partnerships, concentration field day. Um, and then, of course, the fair. And then, uh, something we've done different this spring, May and June, we did a Bryson City Walk Audit to find out where there's some gaps and sidewalks that are cracked or broken and trying to help out the town a little bit there and, and the community. So we're just assessing it and we'll do a report here late summer, early fall. So, a lot of good things out there in the community, but there's some, uh, things that can be repaired, as, as y'all well know. Every Veterans Day, I always do an outreach program for, um, in honor of the veterans. Give out spruce seedlings and that's about a hundred. It spreads out to about thirty citizens pick those up to plant in honor of veterans. Then I come back in the spring and, uh, did that this year with some spice bushes for Arbor Day celebration. And, um, we relocated with Jeff, the Franklin tree. That was really interesting. So that's up at Darnell's now. Uh, hope it makes it. So I want to introduce, uh, one of our newest members of the staff, Shannon Royce. She's our family consumer science agent. She also works two counties, Swain and Jackson, and she's been on since November one. So, Shannon, I'll let you present your, uh.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening. Um, as Rob mentioned, my name's Shannon Royce and I'm the newest family consumer sciences agent, um, Jackson and Swain. And so one of my primary, um, points of focus for both counties is focusing on, um, helping address chronic disease and doing that through, um, healthy lifestyles. So over the last eight months, um, I've worked with both seniors, uh, centers in Jackson and Swain, putting on programs, um, nutrition programs, um, like med instead of meds, which is kind of promoting eating in a Mediterranean way instead of, um, having to take medicine. Um, we've done a variety of fitness programs at the Swain Senior Center. And then out at the Cooperative Extension Office, we've been putting on yoga classes, which have been highly attended and highly successful. And that kind of helps folks with their movement and helping address mental health and stress. Um, collaborated with Rob, helping do that walk audit that you probably read about recently in the paper. Um, so we're looking forward to compiling, um, the input, um, that we received from our volunteers and ourselves and, and presenting those, uh, results to you. Um, and then just doing some stuff in Jackson County, um, testing out, doing what's called the donation station at the Silva Farmers Market. Um, seeing how that goes over there and if it's well-received, um, bringing that over here to the Swain County market. And that's basically a program to help address the food insecurity in the area. So, um, farmers can donate leftover produce at the end of the market. Um, patrons to the market can donate cash and then we can shop the market for that produce. Or, um, folks can buy extra produce and donate that as well. And then we highlight a, a specific food pantry every month. And then that food pantry, um, is the recipient of that fresh produce to help supplement, um, what they're offering to the citizens. So looking forward to continuing with that. Um, yeah, so really just doing a lot of health and wellness programs here, um, in the county and working with, um, my advisory group and, um, having their feedback and letting us know what the needs are in Swain County and how we at the Extension Office can best address those. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Shannon. Appreciate that. Okay, so, um, as far as, uh, Kinder Fortner is our livestock agent. And she works closely with Patty Jo, uh, on the fair. She's the one that is managing the whole livestock show. She also helps with our livestock club here, which is a four-H club. Then she does a lot of educational programs with a, an association, which has been around for years, the Jackson, Macon, Swain Cattle and Association. Puts on educational tours for anybody, uh, willing to come. And then they do a lot of, uh, educations through the newspapers. You may see some of those, uh, and then some programs, uh, monthly except during the summer. So went over that with the, uh, the fair. And then we have a, she puts newspaper articles in once a month of pretending to livestock. Not just cattle, but small ruminants and poultry. Um, then she puts out a newsletter called the Stock Tank, that type of thing. So, doing great there. So if you have any questions with livestock, she will help with equine as well. So, anything livestock related. And equine horses are livestock. So don't tell N C D A that. But tell us, yes, they are. Four-H, our new, uh, person also came on, uh, November first. It's Amber Johnston. She's down with a couple of youth here from the county down at Debets at Jeff Penn. The active clubs that are strong is the Bullets and Bows, uh, four-H Shooting Sports. It's a really good club, well-attended. The livestock club that she works with, uh, Patty Jo on. And then the, uh, horse club we've got here, the Sidney Lambert is the volunteer for that, the, uh, uh, Bronk Buster's four-H Club. And then back to our roots, she has some other clubs going on, uh, garden, sewing, photography, fishing, technology, um, that type of thing. So, and then has one member, a member-at-large, uh, club that if you're just interested, learn about four-H, you can get your feet wet and come in with that. So she's been working hard getting, uh, volunteers, because that's how a lot of these clubs are sustainable, is having a volunteer that she works with. And as you can imagine, working for a university like NC State, there's a lot of paperwork with youth. So she manages all that registration, which is called four-H Online. Um, I cannot walk you through it, but she can. So active, uh, members, uh, for Swain four-H is seventy-three youth, okay, right now. So we did a four-H plant sale, which we use that to help with, uh, summer residential camps. She did a hunter safety course out, uh, several weeks ago with the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. And then she did a, hosted a four-H meeting where they, the parents and the youth came to learn about four-H and how to get registered, uh, officially with the North Carolina State, uh, four-H program. So, so there's that. Oh, embryology is a big one. She worked with elementary schools. She did with Mount Discovery. She had one classroom of fifteen students. And then Swain West, she had three classrooms with fifty-six participants. That goes all the way, the life cycle from the egg to the chick. And then those chicks went to a community member. And then she did, even back in the winter, did a butterfly one with seven classrooms and she worked with a hundred and twenty-six students. So, and then a couple of weeks ago, her and Kendra went. Shannon, did you go to that too? To the STEAM program? Okay, I'm sorry. They went to the, uh, before school got out, they went to the, uh, middle school and did some, uh, science experiments with the sixth and eighth graders. Okay. So that's four-H. Um, good things to come with that. We also have a four-H, uh, live, uh, raised bed garden out at our office that she has started with a, uh, half a dozen youth. Horticulture agent is both commercial and consumer, consumer being the residential, commercial being, of course, your Darnells. Horticulture agent is both commercial and consumer, consumer being the residential, commercial being of course your Darnells, Minda Doughtery. She's, works a lot on pesticide relicensing certifications, relicensing, recertifications. She had a program that was canceled because of snow back on February 19th and 20th. But she did get all the people here in the community that are landscape contractors, that type of thing. She did get those under X and V credits, recertification training for those folks. And we work cross-county sometimes with Macon and Haywood on that. And she had 48, almost 50 farm visits here in the county that she works with. And then 44, what we call technical assistance, that could be by phone. With plant disease, it could be a home garden. It could be, of course, she works very closely with the Darnells on diseases there, whether it's solar plants, from strawberries, of course, to the tomatoes. And being in the climate we're in and the wet weather we've had this year, she has been down there at least twice a week, troubleshooting with things that are coming and going there. So Jeff and Nate and Afton really lean on Minda a lot. So as well as some other producers here in the county. And then we did a pesticide pickup back in November out at the transfer station. And people just bring things that have had been in the storage unit or in the bottom of the basement from pesticides, herbicides, that they don't know what to do with. We have a company that's contracted through NCDA. And we get, we had a lot of interest in that. We probably had 50 or 60 people come out last fall. And so instead of that stuff getting back in into the environment, they take it and take it off and then go from there with it. So. And then I appreciate y'all coming out back in, was it April or May to SCC and taking a look and where our office is. And just to give a little bit of, where is that paper? Anyway, the program that we have out there is everything from livestock, shooting sports, meetings during the winter, gardening, of course, what Shannon mentioned with the healthy lifestyle, fitness programs, cardio, yoga. And then we have a beautiful kitchen there that we share a lot with other people in that building. So that is a beautiful space. Of course, y'all know it's got some issues. Appreciate you taking the time to learn about what we do out there and everything. And then this is, that's kind of the highlights, the programs that we offer. I'll give you a little trifold here. Things that we offer anytime, anywhere, just on what the community requests. So I'll let you. And last but not least, I would also like to mention Melissa Vaughn. Yeah. She was the one that put together this beautiful, colorful, informative information sheets for our report. She does a whole lot of work out there, ship scheduling. She does a lot for the fairs, getting all the craft vendors and the agriculture, the horticulture entries in. So she is on the last page there. She's kind of our eyes and ears in our frontline there at the office. And Melissa's been there quite a while, like myself, even longer than me. So hats off to Melissa. She does a great job. I'm sure y'all know her. So she also serves on the fair board. And last year we didn't have a 4H agent. They had resigned and she picked up and made sure that the fair had some 4H entries. So she, she fills the gaps where we're missing. So hats off to Melissa Vaughn. Any questions? Thank you. Anybody got any questions, Rob? Appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Yeah. Appreciate y'all and appreciate the support you give us. Thank you. Next up will be data processing IT.
Mark's not here. We can table it to the next one.
Just table that. And that's, that will be the library quarterly report.
Good evening. So today I'm just really the warmup for the, for the next item on the agenda. So I'll be brief. We're pleased with the contract from Beverly Grant. It's for $5,370,212 with a total project budget of $7,69,217, or basically 7.1 million. We've raised 6.3 million in the quiet phase where we have also been building relationships for future gifts. Going forward, we need to raise approximately $800,000. We're still submitting grants and will continue to do so throughout the life of the project. With the approval of the contract, we move into the general public phase of the fundraising campaign where the project will be very visible in the community with a groundbreaking activity on the property, distributing brochures, advertising, visiting clubs, newsletters and events with our honorary chair, Heath Schuler. So that's when it becomes really real for everyone, when you can actually see things happening on the property. And so we actually, we do anticipate reaching or exceeding our goal. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
And I'll be here if you have any questions.
Ellen, if you just want to stay while we discuss this. So the next item on the agenda is the contract. So you have two documents. The first one being, of course, this was all the same contract that we looked at before, back in December. The conversation in December was try to talk costs with them, see where we can work on the cost, where we can get that cost down and then go from there. So they've worked diligently, I think Ellen can share, trying to figure out how to cut those costs to get to that 5.3 project cost that she shared. So that is what is in this document is Beverly Grant is the one that has sent the very first document. It's just the basic with the dollar amount. And then the second document is actually the conditions of their contract with us. So they had, Kim has reviewed both of these and she had no questions for what was in the documents. She feels comfortable. It is just a very general contract like it would be with anyone else. So we did have a discussion of trying to get this voted and approved because we have already been through the motion. It was just working on getting that dollar.
Anybody got any questions on any of this? Again, like I said, we have, we've already went through this with them and they have got down to work. We need them to be. And so I'm saying that and Kim was with our county attorneys already looked over this. So say that I'll ask for a motion to approve this agreement between the owner and the contractor. Let me just see if there's a, actually not a name on it. That's what it says.
Oh no, that, that first one, the smaller one is Beverly Grant. That we are listed as the owner because we do actually own the building and then the contractor is Beverly Grant. For the project of the Marianna Black Library.
I'll need that motion. Motion then second. You can just guess. Own favorite, please raise your right hand. Passing that. Next up is the purchasing policy changes.
So last year around this time, we went through the purchasing policy as far as getting it super up to date. So there's been some other changes that we're looking at. So what is highlighted in yellow in that document are the changes. So we'll kind of just go through those. There's not a ton. And the first page is actually defining what we call a full-time employee as far as training, meals, hotel stays, what we would pay for. So that's just defining that. On the second page, it is adding that all purchases and travel and training over $300, which is our PO amount, you must have a PO. So when you go as far as an employee going to training, they need to at least open up a PO and say, okay, this is where I'm going. This is the amount of time. This is what the training is going to cost, motel, so that we have an idea. And then we always do have a purchasing cutoff. We just don't have it, it's given to department heads, but this is actually in writing. We do try to attempt to minimize the amount of purchases from May to August, especially during the closeout of the fiscal year, auditors being in, working on things. So we do try to work and make sure that there's not a ton of purchases, you know, outside of needed things. And then the purchasing procedure for purchases less than 300, it does have to have approval from either the finance director or the county manager. So that's just so we're aware and we can make sure that the budget is there for that approval. And then the finance office buying agent will be comparing prices of orders. Lower price items are available and of the same comparison, they'll override the department order. So if a department turns in an order for something that costs, say $600 and we find it for three somewhere else, the finance office will actually override that unless for some reason it's not comparable. So it will be going to meet the same standards, but we're going to just be shopping around. We do that anyway some, but it's, it's written and this is what we're doing now. And then we have added the next page of vendor selection policy. So based on bid bidding, obviously if it's formal versus unformal, there is a selection for vendors. So that has just really highlighted what that selection policy is. It was already in there, but it just didn't have that title. So that's actually a specific section for vendor selection policy. The next one is about vehicle repair or maintenance. We do have a mechanic on staff. So this is a new where they will have to be reported to that person. Instead of somebody just taking their vehicle to Mountain Ford or Andy Shaw and us getting a bill for $7,000 that we don't have any earthly idea, where the hopes to be our mechanic could pay for it. Or could, could have, could do it for cheaper than what we're paying for it. So he's going to be notified and then he will give, he will notify finance that this is something I can't do, that I'm having to send it out. So we'll still have the PO process and everything in place. The next section is about after working hours or holidays. So we do have after-hours emergencies. And so just the, the normal procedure is that they will be reported to the finance office by the next working day and then of course signed off by the finance director or the county manager to approve the necessity of the purchase. Because unfortunately, sometimes those are not always a necessity. So we want to make sure that what is being purchased is a necessity. And then for service contracts, Cali as the finance officer has to pre-audit those to make sure that any contract that comes through has to, has enough money budgeted for that contract for the year. So service contracts have to go to finance, which is what that says, with just a standard contract form. And then that way it's signed off and normally reviewed by the county attorney if it's something that we haven't done before. And then signed by the county manager and pre-audited by the finance director so that we know that there's enough in the budget for that. And then the sale of county property, the sale of the property authorization form has to be completed before the sale of property. So we do some gov deals things. So we're working on getting that process completely kind of arranged as far as what that looks like and how, how we're made aware that there's something that can go on gov deals or is eligible. Fuel cards, the change with that is fuel cards are required to remain with the assigned vehicle. So when a wax card comes through to a county vehicle, it's actually assigned to that vehicle, not the person. And sometimes people take it with them to, if they, you know, have to drive a different car. So they have to start leaving it with the vehicle because then it gets all mixed up. Purchases for credit cards or by vendor selection, purchase cards are held at the finance office and are only used by finance personnel. You know, you'll follow the purchasing rules and contact a member of the finance office in order to purchase. They're not allowed out of the office or to be used by other personnel unless special permission is granted. So employees that are going on to trainings and things do sometimes take county credit cards and then they bring their receipt back. So that's kind of the special, but for the most part, all credit cards are held in the finance office. And then on the next page, it's highlighted itemized receipts. When we receive receipts back, they have to be itemized. Sometimes we just get the, you know, the paid receipt or whatever, but we have to actually see what the employee bought. If they cannot provide an itemized receipt and it's on a credit card, then they probably will have to be paying that back. And then underneath that, meal purchases for staff meetings or department meetings are allowed with prior approval. Purchases only apply to county employees and the department head is responsible for providing a sign-in sheet and an agenda. So that way we're seeing, you know, just the basic of what the meeting was about and as well as how many people attended versus the purchase of food for it. Non-employee meals must be paid for separately and are not reimbursable. We put a little bit more thought and information into meal allowances. So for lunch, to receive lunch during the day or trip must fall between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So there's just a little bit of more absolute on the time in which we would pay for meals. The vehicle policy for travel, this is just highlighting that this policy was in there, but it wasn't highlighted specific. The travel cards are not to be used for fuel during employee travel. So, you know, you, you can't use those on your personal vehicle. So the, if the employee is taking their personal vehicle, they have to use theirs and get reimbursed, or they have to use their own card and get reimbursed. If they drive a county car, then they are held responsible for that wax card and what happens with it. And I think that is it. Any questions? I know that that's a lot. You know, you all can review it and go over it. We'll put it back on the regular session to be voted on and approved. So please, please go over everything. Nothing else has changed unless it's highlighted. So, and this was the policy that we did vote last year. So if you have questions. So it depends on what they're doing. So if they, if they're charging a credit card and they're not supposed to be, they do have to pay it back. There's not a grading within this policy, no. But there, I mean, there would be depending on what the offense is. It's possible that if they are not using the credit card, or if they use the credit card incorrectly, they have to pay it back and then they're not eligible to use the credit card any longer and they have to actually ask for reimbursement. Well, it's in the personnel policy. Versus, yeah, it's just too different. Yeah.
Hey Lottie, for the, for the wax, the, the fuel cards, you said they stay in the vehicles?
Yes. They stay in the vehicle that they're assigned to. So like if a vehicle is wrecked or something happens that it has, that it's out of rotation or no one's driving it, that card has to be turned into money. And it's, and it's cut essentially.
Is if you're not in that system, in that wax system, can't use the card?
Correct. So you have, you have identified.
So, and this is where I was going with it. If somebody got it out of the, got it out of the car, they couldn't use it?
Correct. You're assigned a PIN as an employee. So it's just like a debit card. You have to put in your PIN number and the mileage of the vehicle. So when we get the bill, it actually has what mileage people are putting in and what employee is using for what.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that. I was worried.
And you know, I mean, we've had it, you know, sometimes people get out of the pump and drop it on the ground or forget, you know, whatever. And we, we can turn them off in finance too. So if it's reported that it's missing, we go ahead and turn it off. So, but no, it's, it's not just usable by anyone. It's not like a credit card.
I just worry about, we, we don't live in a perfect forest. I don't know how people can be.
They can tap the card? Okay. Do you know which place? Cause I, I can go and try. Cause I, I can go and try. Okay.
It's, yeah, it's not.
It does not have a chip.
It's not a credit card nor it is a debit card.
Yeah.
It's a fuel.
It's a gas card.
Yeah. I, I just want to make sure that if anybody else gets it, nobody can use it.
Yeah, you can't even use it. You can't even get a card.
Right, yeah.
You know, like if you're in a shale.
Yeah, that's, that's just my.
Yeah, it's specific to guys.
Yeah, that's just my question.
So again, review that if you have any questions or if you still have questions now, I'll be happy to answer them. But review, and then if you have any more questions, please let me know.
That was my only question.
Okay.
Anybody else? Uh, next up will be county managers report.
So the only thing, um, I just have a quick something. I have been talking with Verizon Wireless over the last month or so. Um, they are going to be sending me some information. We're going to be, and this has been in the works, um, putting GPS on the vehicles. And so this is something that is, it's a Verizon Wireless thing. It's completely outside and separate from anything that we do. So they actually have a technician come in and install it and then they give access for it. So we're going to be working on that in the next month or two to get that equipped to all county vehicles. And then we also um are looking at, they offer uh cameras in the car, which shows outside and inside. So we're looking at that as far as the cost for that. And then um we have had a request come in to talk about body cams for different uh departments that we feel may need those. So we're going to be working on a couple of those things. Uh, we're going to be looking for some grants to try to help fund some of those as well. But there may be a budget amendment depending on the dollar amount for those. So just kind of keep that in mind that that's something that we've been working on. But uh we'll get more information hopefully in the next couple of weeks from Verizon specific about the GPS.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah.
Uh, commissioners reports, Bobby will start.
All I've got. We've been working on D S S, you know, we got it finished up. It's ready to go and our um animal service building out there, it's coming along real good. I think maybe by the first or second week in August, we should have it winded up. So uh, about all I've got on the hill.
Yep. I've attended soil and water meetings the other day and uh I don't think which, which organization it is, but anyway, they're doing a benefit golf tournament for um Kel Alge's family. So that's coming up pretty soon. I talked to quite a bit about the county fair and how the growth is happening with county fair. And uh they're, they continue to be very thankful for the continued support from the county and from T D A and from all people who contribute to that uh to grow uh bigger. As Rob mentioned earlier, there's a, there's a poster, a couple of other posters or whatever. August thirty third, twenty fourth.
Twenty second.
Twenty second, twenty third.
Evening afternoon. Second.
So anyway, that's coming up. Uh, other than that, I'm thankful as well as anybody that travels from Risa City towards Silva that we're getting that little section funded. So uh thanks to D O T for coming through with uh more money and for, for new payment. Glad to see that happening. Other than that, that's, that's all that I.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I haven't really attended any meetings the past couple of weeks, you know, with Fourth of July coming. Everybody's kind of trying to stay away from meetings, but uh uh remember, you know, four square, if, if you have anybody who needs help with, you know, weatherization programs. I will say they, with the state uh not really, maybe the state or federal government not funding. I think it's state that's not doing op program anymore, which is healthy opportunities. Uh, it's a food program. So that's going, as of right now, that's going away. Um, and that's a, that's a big hit because there's a lot of people in our community as well as other uh adjacent counties that use that program uh through the four square community, uh action community uh group. Um, and uh Ms. Genie, she works over there in the, oh, uh in the courthouse building. So uh if you want to get any more information through her, she's a great person to sit down. She'll, she'll walk through any and all programs. There's brochures over there and, and so please, please go take a uh look at that. Uh, you know, I've talked to uh some other people and um, you know, our county just don't use the funds that we get allocated. You know, and we got a lot of people who could use that. So um, please, if you know anybody who needs help through those, they, they do a lot with HUD too and, and different things like that. So um, that, that's pretty much what I've been working on is just trying to get the word out there uh with, with the four square program right now. So uh also um, it just came to my, I've been doing T ball with, with uh the rec park and everything. And uh she felt the mention that our, our water slide was working last week. I saw a bunch of kids, I know Bobby, you've seen a bunch of kids going down the water slides. So that's pretty cool to see that.
Been having a good time, I'm sorry. But it's steady line.
So it's cool to see that that water slide's open. So uh, uh, my kids have been bugging me to go down with them, so maybe, maybe we'll go do that.
That could be good.
Yeah, so that's all I had this year.
So, like, thanks, sir. Um, we'll just move on. This is kind of some reporting, but this is also informal discussion as well. Um, I did receive a letter and it's from the um Jackson County Board of Commissioners. Um, it's directed to me and the Swain County Board of Commissioners as well. Uh, this was a uh, um, letter that was sent. Dear Chairman Siegel, Jackson County, buying through its Board of Commissioners does hereby serve written notice pursuant of two seven N C A C oh two one point oh three oh eight A and the provisions of withdrawal as set forth in the Fontana Regional Library in our local agreement of its intent to depart from the Fontana Regional Library system. This withdrawal shall be effective June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. Jackson County commits to meet all applicable funding, operational and reporting obligations through the end of the fiscal year. Jackson County further commits to ensure a responsible and orderly transition. This notice is being provided in compliance with the July first statutory deadline and with notification to Fontana Regional Library Board, Macon County, Swain County and the State Library of North Carolina. Sign, Mark Letts, Chairman, Jackson County Board Commissioner. So it is official that they have pulled out of the F R L. They have one year, I believe it is, to uh figure this out, or we do, we all do. So uh, it's Macon County and Jackson County. So uh, we'll be working on that and there'll be several working on, on it. And so I'll keep you guys informed what I hear and what we're doing. I don't know exactly how that's going to play out, so. And also wanted to mention that the Swain clean, uh, had been cleaning up the county. And I always want to give them props because uh they do a tremendous job of going out and picking up trash. I see some of them walking around town sometimes. I know they're Swain clean and uh this is probably one of the greatest things that we got in this community is those guys that's uh going out and picking everybody else's trash up. So I, I command them and uh I thank, thankful for everyone up that does it. Anybody got anything else informal?
Mr. Chairman, we was discussing a fleet vehicles. And I was told that our fleet vehicles didn't have a warranty. Well, I done a little research going back. We, we can take the VIN of our vehicles that we've had. What you've got to do is put that VIN with Ford company or where they come from, which are their hard fours. And it can tell all the maintenance that's been on, especially if somebody's turned it in and collected.
Okay.
It's been turned in twice. Either way, I think we need to get the VIN numbers of some vehicles backwards a little bit. Because uh I've never heard of a new vehicle without a warranty and that troubles me.
As far as I'm aware, we, we are doing the standard warranty. And I think that they buy the extended, especially for um the sheriff's department.
Well, it means nobody knows.
Yeah, but when I actually went back and looked, you know, at the, the documentation that we received where we pay, there, there were dollar amounts for extended warranties on most of the vehicles, so.
Check it out. You can go backwards with that VIN number and anything that's been turned in. That own warranty, then we go with that then.
I think I hadn't heard that we need to um document every time, but you know, there's been a service and keep up with all that. Make sure they are getting serviced when they should be.
Yeah.
And the finance office is doing that. They have a running spreadsheet that has every vehicle based on department. And so um if the mechanic is doing something like an oil change or just regular service, when he brings the receipts in for the oil or whatever from advance, that's documented. Um, when tires are changed on cars, that's documented because he has to prepare information. Same thing if it goes out to a dealership to be fixed for something, that's also recorded in there. So they do have a running document of that based on what the mechanics do it. Now, if the employee is not doing, the other positive with the GPS is um when you put, when it's connected to the, to the vehicle and you actually put the mileage in, like um we can say every four thousand miles, we want a notification to go to the following people that this vehicle needs maintenance and oil change or whatever. And it will send emails or texts or whatever we want it to, to whomever we want to say this vehicle needs maintenance. So that will also help with that, making sure that the maintenance is kept up to date.
A lot of them is keeping maintained.
I'm going to mention something else today. I was in Jackson County, uh, it was like over the weekend and they have this thing that's uh Music by the River. Have you seen that? That place was packed out full of people. So we had a couple of towns autumn here, so they're not as town autumn or not, but I just wanted to mention that. I don't know if we could park it with you guys or something like that and look at, that's a pretty neat little thing that they do down there on the, it's right on the backside of town by the river, so. Any more informal? Not, we'll move on into public comment. Now, ready to roll to public comment, we're coming up. Please state your name, your address. You have five minutes to speak no more. You'll be addressing the board as a whole, not any individual, whether on the board or in the audience. The board will not make any comments at this time. It's time for you to ask, ask questions. This is your time of public comment to address your concerns. No time shall be shared by any individual and you have your own time. Please pay attention to the clock behind me. Don't make me stop you, please. Mr. Tim Hines?
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. I made some notes, stay on track and cover everything important before that timer runs out that Mr. Siegel spoke about. First, I want to express my gratitude for your approval of the hundred and twenty five thousand dollar funding for fire services for the Tuxedo Fire District. Our goal at the Broad City Fire Department remains to have twenty four seven staffing at the firehouse so we can provide prompt service to every district in the county, whether for fire structures or mutual aid requests. We are working toward a model very similar to what our neighbors at Qualifier Department recently achieved with support from their county. I'm sorry I couldn't be here in person the day you were discussing fire services. My wife tested positive for strep and I didn't want to risk spreading illness. In the future, please invite any of the town representatives if you think we can help advance a discussion for improvements. I would like to, I would like to address some comments that came up in that meeting. I regret if anyone feels that the town has been twisting your arm or acting like a bully. That has never been our intention. We have always tried to be honest and transparent about our goal of achieving twenty four seven fire coverage for our community. Since I joined the town board, we've had two joint meetings with your board. In each, we made it clear that the town had no plans to withdraw from a fire agreement for the Tuxedo Fire District. During your May meeting, it was mentioned that you were expecting an ask of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, but you hadn't received a contract. We sent a contract immediately after our next meeting, which was the same day, using the same wording request as last year, just as you were expecting. After these past two weekends, some of you may have noticed that turnout for certain structure fires has been low. This is not just a challenge in our county, it's a problem nationwide. If anyone on this board would like to talk about ways we can work together to improve firefighter turnout and address staffing challenges, I would truly welcome that conversation. This problem isn't going away. I'm also concerned that the building of additional fire stations could leave us facing the same staffing challenges we've already seen, which could impact how efficiently we're using our community's tax dollars. On a positive note, the town is actively pursuing grant funds for a water system improvement project. The proposed project generally includes two new river waterline crossings and storage tank improvements on both sides of the river. Benefits include increased available water flow and pressure for area residences and businesses, including expanding capacity in industrial work, as well as increased fire flow availability, improved resilience against future natural disasters such as flooding and water system redundancy that will better maintain service to customers during repair and maintenance activities. The last item I'd like to share with you is an article by Matt, by Matt Lehman. It's titled, Defending Civic Trusts the Responsibility of Local Leadership. He's better with words than I am, but the takeaway is that now more than ever, we are seeing government entities dwindle away and become less cooperative with each other at a cost to citizens. This leads to dis, to distrust and ultimately to combative politics. I truly believe that a sense of cooperation for the better good starts at our level, at our town, in our county. If we can be a shining example at that local level, hopefully we can make an impact at the state and federal. The last point I'll leave you with is this, much smarter man than me wrote this. Reasoning together in public makes a long term, long term impact. Telling constituents, this is what we've tried before, this is what has worked, this is what didn't work. Let it play out in full public so people can see the earnest people on the boards and staff making the best interest of our community overall. I appreciate your time and Kevin, if you don't mind, I've got some handouts. I'll hand it to everybody. I put a card on there so if anybody wants to get in touch, got every, every means of communication. I would be proud of that. And I know we're not supposed to address each other, but uh Chair Siegel had encouraged the Chamber of Commerce to try to present some ideas on regularly occurring concerts. Uh, I'd love to see something happen every weekend downtown for our businesses and for our residents in general.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Next up, Ms. Courtney Deals.
Thanks for having me. I don't really want to be here, but here I am. Congratulations, today is a renewal of your contract day. Um, I agree with, we need to work something out to get a little festival thing going over at the administration building. That would be phenomenal. I think the problem comes in because it takes away from the train. And so we're going to have to figure out that competition because our town is more important than that private entity. Which leads me to why are we not making more of a fuss to find out the cause of that fire and to actually hold them accountable? Because it's been, you know, I know a fire investigation takes a long time, but when no one's able to get a response for this long, it's like there's avoidance. And um we're asking you guys to hold them accountable for the benefit of your constituents. Um, and a lot of recent events, can we all agree that we need to move forward with transparency and accountability? And we need to knock off some of the behind closed door meetings and the hiding things from your constituents. Uh, had asked for a document showing how many um out of court settlements that we as the taxpayers have been responsible for in the last five years, whether that be for the school board or the sheriff's department or because of sidewalks. And I was told that y'all didn't have to answer my questions. So as I don't know the legal name of that document, I'm asking you each one to your face, why can we not have transparency? I don't have time to sit there and try to be a forensic CPA and dig through your budget and figure out where you paid out to the court and why, but we all know it's been happening. So we just ask that you stop with the closed door hiding things. Stop with the avoidance of the sunshine laws by having meetings and discussing things by two of us can go and two of us cannot, et cetera. So thanks for having me. Let's all look forward to a better in the future.
Thank you.
That is all, public comment. And uh this time I'll entertain a motion.
You can make a motion.
May I say? All favor.
All favor.